We're going to reconvene with Ms. Lisa Cullen. And if I call you by your first name, I apologize. It's just I consider you a friend and it's almost taboo.
It's just fine.
Sometimes it's hard enough to remember to call these guys Commissioner Furs before. So, thank you very much. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Well, we'll thank you all for the opportunity to discuss the Tax Collector's Office with you. We don't have anything too exciting planned this year, so I'll share what I can. Jill and, excuse me, Frank and Jill, we'll just be first names here. Ask me to go through our budget process because it is a little different than some of the other constitutional officers. And one of the fundamental functions of our office is the collection of those funds used by state and local agencies here. And in some of that, there's some enforcement. And I'm one of those constitutional officers along with the sheriff who actually can seize property. And we do some of that in Brevard County. Again, with the collection of those funds, we are responsible for distributing them as well. And we've done quite a bit of that already this year with probably around 90% of our roll, 90% of our accounts have been collected. So, we're in pretty good shape. We do have a little bit of investment activity in our office. We're prohibited from going out 90 days or longer. But we do invest and try to bring in some extra dollars with the funds that we would still have to have short term. And along with that, we try to do that with fairness and accountability. And I'm proud to say we've had a clean audit each year that I've been tax collector. We have 204 budgeted positions in addition to my own. Our administrative office is located in Titusville, and we have six branch offices throughout the county to serve our citizens. And the one thing that is on our radar for the upcoming budget year, it'll actually be the next two budget years because in talking with the budget office, we determined it was best to try to spread it over two budget years, is we're going to be expanding our Palm Bay office to better serve the growing community there. And I just can't talk about these people and those branches without saying how proud I am of the people that work there and how they conduct themselves each day. And they do an enormous amount of work and they make it look so easy. So, if they're watching, I just want to say how much I appreciate each and every one of them. Now, of those six offices, two of them are leased, and that's a large part of our operating As your tax collector, I am in charge and delineated to statutorily carry out functions for various state agencies. And those being the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles and the Department of Revenue are the two heavy hitters that I work most for. We've also partnered with the Department of Health to provide birth certificates throughout the county in each of our offices. And Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to take applications for concealed weapons licenses and renew those licenses. Not only do we have those statutory duties, we've also contracted with several others. In Viera, you can get your TSA Pre-Check, make an application for that here, and get your known traveler number to attach to your airline tickets. We are in charge of the issuance and renewal of business tax receipts on your behalf, as well as the collection of the tourist development tax. And we also provide lockbox services for the cities of Cocoa and Melbourne and process their water payments for them. We are a fee office in Brevard County, and that means we earn a fee for the services we provide, and we use those monies to fund our operations. The Department of Revenue oversees that process for us. Those expenditures must be justified, reasonable, and necessary. And we must have that DOR approval before we move forward. I've included in this presentation the link to the budget workbook that we use as collectors to prepare our budget for Department of Revenue. It's one of the last that you'll see as it's due August 1. But if you want to delve into the process or see what the forms are, if you use that link, it will get you to last year's workbook. They have not put the new book up because of some changes that Department of Revenue that Governor DeSantis has made, so I'm sure that'll be up there very shortly. Our timetable hasn't changed. Our budget is due to the Department of Revenue by August 1, and we always provide a copy to you so you can see what we're doing. And we receive that tentative budget approval by September 15 and then a final by September 30. And that budget is statutorily required to be put on our website, so everyone has access I went ahead and listed the actual and estimated revenue that we saw from fiscal year 2017, 2018. You can see we were pretty close. And for 2018, 2019, we're looking at a little over $18 million in fees that our office will collect. The Tax Collector's Budget has three appropriation, I call them buckets. And like you saw with the sheriff, my largest appropriation is for our personnel. Our personnel make our office. The operating expenses are largely for those leased offices and also our data protection and processing. We have an enormous amount of data. We have to protect it. But we try to balance those charges throughout the year so we're not being hit by any one big category every year. We try to even it out, keep our budget pretty stable. And then, of course, our capital outlay is almost nothing this year. We just try to keep it low. This was one of those years we won't be having a lot unless we do get into some of that Palm Bay renovation this budget year, which we may do a budget amendment for that. And of course, you would get a copy of that. And Ashley Facilities is working with us on that project, and we actually garnered the land that we're going to use from you as well to keep it all in that government center. I think an item of concern for you are the commissions that you pay and what unused fees you may see. And for last year, last fiscal year, 2017, 2018, this is what the amount came to, less the unused fees that we distributed to you. One of the things when you look at that $9 million that you need to be aware of is the statutory payment of the fees for the school board is included in that nine. And we break all of that out for you, but that is included in that number. I wanted you to make you aware of that. And other than that, we expect our budget to stay relatively the same, other than the Palm Bay renovations, which we're looking at probably half a million dollars this budget year. We're still working to figure out if we're going to have to put sprinklers throughout that whole building or some different things like that. So, we're working through some issues, and we don't know a definite price yet. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are you taking on more space or are you building on?
We're building on. We're not taking any more space. You're going to have me shot before I leave here.
No, no, I'm just asking because...
We're actually phased building on. We're going to build on in addition and move in there while they renovate the other side. And then, we'll probably close for what we hope to be two, three days, open up the middle and open up with a much bigger area to serve the public. We would look at adding a concealed weapons licensing room there as well.
Nice.
We know there's a lot of those in the south end of the county that are actually probably going to Indian River County to be processed. We'd like to be able to keep them here at home.
We appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you. I just want to take a moment of privilege and tell you what an honor it is to work with your budget team, Mr. Bade, Jill Hayes, everyone. They work so well with us. We do try to keep them informed of what we're doing. I don't like surprises. I think for Brevard County, we have to operate as a team. We're all in this together and...
They say the same thing about you.
Well, I'm glad. I'm glad because I think we have a very good working relationship.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You get to escape now. All right, Mr. Zonkewoy wasn't talking about earlier.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Whenever you're ready.
You said the property appraiser looks awfully different today.
Yeah, I have to apologize. Very different, yes, sir. Dana is up in Tallahassee where she absolutely does not want to be. She'd much rather be here to tell you the story of the office. But it's a legislative day up there, working on a couple of initiatives with the Property Appraisers Association. So, yeah, we couldn't be more different, I suppose, in the presentation. But I just wanted to take a moment to give you a quick history of kind of, if you know where we came from, then you'll understand where we're going really fast. Property Appraisers Office, we have about 100 employees. Most of them are in Titusville. We're co-located with county facilities in Merritt Island, Viera, Melbourne, Palm Bay. And we are a full-service organization, but we rely heavily upon the county. And we do also have a great partnership with your staff. You know, Frank is the first person I call whenever I get stuck in an elevator in county But between IT, budget with Jill, just everybody, Mr. Denninghoff and I have each other's cellphone numbers from many years ago, and we always stay in touch if there's something going on that affects both offices. So, we do have a great relationship with everybody, and it's helpful. It really is. As you know, Dana came into office in 2013, and there were some challenges that we had to take a look at. Technology was a major issue. The staffing was an issue. The pressures that you all are under as our primary funder is an issue. And that no matter what we did, we had to make sure that the employees were bought into it because they're my customer. I'm the finance director and HR director, and we're trying to do a lot of different things at once, and a lot of balls are in the air, and it's difficult on our staff to do it. But we were somewhat compelled to do that. You've heard some of the same stories today from Mr. Ellis and others, but we also are the victim, we're the victim of some very old technology. As Scott described earlier, when you get in the business of writing code, you now own that problem from beginning to end. And we had 30-year-old code that was, the people who originally wrote our database software were dead. The people who sold it to us were dead. The people who were maintaining it were dead. We had a few people left on staff who actually could speak this language, which was Adbas, or Adabas, I think, was the way the Brits would pronounce it to us. That's the database that all of our data was in. An arcane language that's probably about 150th in popularity. Nobody else knew how to manipulate it. So, we had to switch that to a SQL-based system using an off-the-shelf vendor. And even the hardware we were using it on, I'm exaggerating a little bit when I show you this picture of all these ratty old servers, but we did have 24 servers out there, you know, 12 servers with 12 backups. It was about as arcane as you could possibly get. So, over the course of a couple of years, we did an RFP within the first few months that we were there for our new database system, our CAMAS system. But to even pull that off, we had to repopulate our servers. We had to do it more cost-effectively, virtualizing our servers. And so, you can see the difference between the green screen on that last, between a modern database software and old servers and new. These were our nightmare. But we got through that, so I understand where the clerk is at. And we were very fortunate to be able to do about $2 million worth of hardware and software changes from within our budget. So, we actually used savings from, that we internally generated, to finance that $2 million overhaul, which for us was pretty significant. We were a $9 million roughly budget altogether. So, it was not a small thing to pull all that off. And again, I have to give kudos, we all give kudos to our staff to be able to work a couple of jobs. There was a point in time where they were maintaining two different software systems. Anytime they made a change in the old system, they had to simultaneously make a change in the new system while we were in transition and double work for a number of months. And it was a challenge. But that's what we've done. We've challenged everything. And the newspaper guys in the room will know that quote, you know, "If your mother says she loves you, check it out." And we challenged everything. We looked at every expense that we have, every contract that we have, and we took nothing for granted. And in the course of that, we probably changed out. I remember Dana was telling an employee in the elevator one day who was kind of upset that we were changing so much stuff to try to be more cost-effective and be smarter with our expenses. And she said, "Well, hey, at least we haven't changed the phone system." And about a month later, we changed the phone system. So, you know, we've gone through everything at least once. And similarly, we're trying to make the best use of our staff. To get buy-in to what we're doing has been a real effort. You know, we copied, we stole blatantly from the Tax Collector's Office. We now do an in-service day where we shut all of our offices down, get everybody in one room because it's hard to get people from Palm Bay to talk to people in Titusville. And that was a terrific idea, and it's done a lot for our morale. It's done a lot for our standardization, which is really important to make sure that the people in Titusville, the people in Palm Bay, and the people in Melbourne are all doing the same work, the same way, so that the customer gets a consistent experience. But, you know, we've also put more people on the front line. We moved our admin staff from 14 down to seven when we first came in. And our staffing now, and this is really what I want to talk about and I'll get into in a second, we're in a real estate cycle. And 2006 was the last peak, and then it bottomed out, and it's coming back up again. And maybe it's peaked again. I'm not the expert on that. I can't speak to it. I'm the finance guy to make sure the experts get paid. But, you know, in a similar environment, 2006, we had 146 employees. Today, as of right now, on the payroll, we have 96. And we are not behind. We are not overworked. We're maintaining the flow, a large part due to the technology and the change in processes that we've done. But we had to get folks bought in. And another thing we had to do was we had to invest in them. Another favorite quote of mine is, "What happens if you train everybody and they all leave?" And their response should be, "What happens if you don't train them and they stay?" We have invested heavily in training for our staff to the point where I'll tell you quite honestly, Department of Revenue called us and said, "Hey, you know, you guys out of 67 property appraisers are number two overall in your expenses for training." And we're actually kind of happy to hear that because we know that those investments have helped us with retention. Those investments have helped us with professionalism certifications. We see the results of our training, and we are doing it cost-effectively wherever we can. We're putting 12 people right now through a, actually, I think today there's their last day, tomorrow they take their tests. But we're putting 12 people on our evaluation staff through advanced processes for modeling. Normally, if we had a few people going, we would send them to some third location, you know, Lake Mary, they sit in a hotel for a week, they take the class. It's an expensive process, but we got 12. What we did this time is we actually, we hired the trainer. We brought them to our office. They're doing the trainer on-site. It saved us about $10,000 versus sending all these people out of town for a week. So, we are trying to do these things productively. You all are finishing your compensation study. We were about a year and a half ahead of you. We used Evergreen. We made some minor changes here and there to make sure that, as best we could, I mean, it's tough for us to keep up with IT salaries. And I know an IT person is not like a sheriff's deputy, but, you know, we kind of look at that cost of having to hire somebody new and train them as a necessary evil because we can't afford to keep up with the market with IT salaries. But we're doing the best we can across the board, and we've been pretty good on retention. A lot of this I've talked about, I'll just hit it real quick. But, you know, we have gone through an intensive process to replace our servers, replace our desktops, our phone system, that famous phone system. One challenge that we do see, and we're trying to, and we are working on that, is off-site disaster recovery. In the event the sixth story disappears tomorrow, how do we serve the public? That is a very serious challenge for us because we want to be realistic in the likelihood of an outage and what the expenses are. I mean, again, you could prepare for any eventuality, but every eventuality gets really expensive. So, we're trying to be cost-effective, and we do have some off-site premises now, partly through a partnership with the Sheriff's Office, who's been terrific as a partner. But I would like to point out that we had 1.35% annual budget growth since fiscal 13, since Dana came into office. And that number is actually, to be fair, it's lower because we returned about a quarter of a million dollars at the end of last fiscal year because we weren't fully staffed the entire year. So, we've done our best we can as we can. And even now, we're looking at comparable peak markets. This chart just shows you real quick some volumes that we deal with because we live in volume. More people come in the doors, there's more real estate transactions, more deeds are coming through the doors, they do with the clerk. We have to go field-check more properties because there's more sales going on. And all those things, we're looking at a market that's comparable to 2006. That top line for 2006, you can see those numbers there, we had 146 employees. In 2017, we're seeing, in 18, we saw comparable volumes of sales and transactions. Exemptions have gone up significantly. And one cool thing about that is we now, with our new CAMAS system, we have an online homestead application system. So, you can sit at home in your underwear and file for homestead. And we think that's pretty awesome.
Is that the recommended process?
For comfort, I encourage it. I mean, it's entirely a personal decision, though. Field checks is another good use of technology. I mean, you can see where the office really was falling behind in its field checks. We're obligated every five years to re-inspect every property in Brevard County. Doing it as a manual process is very manpower-intensive, and it took dozens of field inspectors at some point to go out and manually do that. Through the use of aerial imagery, we're now doing that predominantly through aerials. In fact, we're going to add a couple of cool layers. You'll be able to actually see the building outprints now on our maps and those types of things as we continue to try to refine our products so that customers can get more out of it. But we're more effective, and we're doing it with about 30% less staff. Along with the Tax Collector's Office, we also are participants in making sure that the tax roll is equitable and fair. So, just to show you a little bit of the activity that we've been doing, and bear in mind, we do this with a staff of four people. We have two inspectors, there are two investigators that are out on the street, and two folks that are working desktop to look for homestead fraud. In 2006, the office filed about $254,000 in liens and returned about $4.5 million to the tax roll. In 2018, there were about $2.8 million filed in liens with $11 million return of the tax roll. And that's not something to brag about because, again, it really is about fairness and equity. That's the equivalent of about, you know, in the last six years, the equivalent of about $340,000, $200,000 houses have been added back to the tax roll, just for people who were, you know, by error or omission, believing they were due a homestead exemption that they were not due. So, that's a large activity of our office, and again, a good partnership with the tax This is the last slide I want to emphasize. You look at 2006 to '07, our office's budget in today's dollars was about $14.5 million. And we're running today at about $8.7 million. And again, that doesn't even count the fact that we turned $280,000 back in excess fees at the end of last year. So, we're running about 40% below in constant dollars. And we're not behind in our work. I mean, we've used the processes, that's the next thing we're looking at, is we are trying to get even better. We've got folks in the office right now that are helping us with our process improvement. As we're taking homestead applications, again, we're trying to do it with less steps and be more consistent across all of our offices. The way we process deeds and splits and combines is our next effort, and we're really seeing the benefits of process improvement. The next thing we're working on is technology in the field, trying to get tablets to our field appraisers. That is a challenge, that software just doesn't seem to exist right now in a cost-effective way. Either we develop it ourselves, or we look with our work with our vendors to get something going. But the more we can do to have our field appraisers in the field entering data directly into a tablet, and then that rolls into our CAMAS system versus them doing it on paper, turning it a piece of paper, and somebody in the office has to re-enter it. So, we're trying to avoid that last, that's our last true double-entry step, and we would love to get rid of that. And finally, we are once again, you know, looking at contracts that we saw great savings with when we first came into office and trying to improve upon those as much as we possibly can. So, I'm not going to tell you anything new for challenges. We are concerned about the environment for wages. We have to be cognizant of that, and it is a retention issue for us. We live in a small universe of employees. There are not many field appraisers out there. There are not many valuation specialists out there. They all work within other offices and ours. So, we can't afford to lose too many of those folks because they're hard to replace. The other thing is technology. We have lived within a pay-as-you-go model to this point, and it has worked for us. I mean, the savings we generate within the same year has paid for our servers. It's paid for our software and those types of things. We continue to think that that'll work that way, but we're not, you know, we can't guarantee that. But the visibility we have right now, we feel pretty good. We are replenishing our desktops and our servers as we go right now within our existing budget. And finally, you know, any decline in employee benefits is going to be a concern for us. I mean, we are struggling to remain competitive, as everybody is. And again, I joked about calling Frank from inside an elevator. I would just say, I saw that item before. If you're going to do the Moore Center, maybe do some of the work after hours. I was one of hundreds of people that got stuck in elevators at the county sixth story up north, and as other people back here will tell you the stories. But the county facilities are always going to be a challenge. And I'm not, the facility staff has been terrific in working with us. We have an issue there. They respond as best as they can. But those buildings are getting older. And I don't know how that works into your long-term plan, but you have to look at where you're keeping folks for air quality, for quality workplace. So, with that, I'm asking any questions, but thank you.
Do we have any? I would just advise you to take the stairs instead of calling Frank.
So many reasons I need to take the stairs. We won't get into that. Thank you very much.
Tim, you don't want to come up, too?
I'm good right here.
Okay.
We'll call you up anyway, just to mess with you.
Yeah, we can embarrass him. Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. I know you've been studying here a while since we're a little over time, so I'll make it quick. Like the Property Appraisers Office, I'd like to give a little brief history of where we've been and what we've done and what we continue to do with less because I'm incredibly proud of my staff and what we continue to accomplish. When I took office in '08, '09 fiscal year, we had 351,000 voters and change. We now have 422,000, 18% increase. The budget was a little over $5 million. This year's budget is $5.2 million. There was 34 full-time, and now we're at 31 full-time. So, although the voter rolls have grown and mandates have continued to increase on the office, we continue to do more with less. And since all of you are candidates, you are more than intimately aware of the function of my office and all that we do and how that continues to grow. Election cycles, our budgets really are a four-year cycle because everything gears up to that, as we're heading into that presidential year, and this year will be that. 2017, 2018, just to give you a little comparison of how our budgets run, we had a municipal and a primary election. In the 2018, 2019, just have the general election, which is the granddaddy of all elections cost-wise and turnout-wise. 1920, the fiscal year we're heading into, we will have municipal, presidential preference primary, and the primary. We only conduct three elections in the same fiscal year, once every four-year cycle. It is our most expensive of a four-year cycle, and that's what we will be heading into next year because we have that extra election. In the last four years, because we do run in four-year cycles, we've seen a 12.9% increase. And I know you guys have heard me probably say this before, but some of the public may have not. Brevard is the ninth-largest voting population and the third-largest state in the nation. I grew up here. We all think of it as our little bedroom community, but we are, and as I tell my poll workers when we go through training, we are a bellwether not only for the state but for the nation because, in addition to being the ninth-largest and the largest swing state in the nation, we typically have the highest voter turnout of any of what's considered the 16-largest counties in the state. And 72% of Florida's 13 million voters reside in one of those 16 counties. We have had an 82% increase in voter, early voter turnout in the last four years. Again, for all of you that have been out campaigning during early voting, you've seen those big increases in early voting. And we've seen almost an 11% increase in mail ballots. If somebody is on the mail ballot request list, by law, I have to send the mail ballot to them whether they decide to go to the polls or go to early voting or not. And we had 30%, I think almost 30% early vote last time. Cybersecurity is a major focal point of elections, always has been internally in our office. Cybersecurity is a major focal point of elections, always has been internally in our office. But you'd have to be living under a rock if you didn't know that in 2016, the presidential election changed the world for us. The eyes of cybersecurity didn't just stay an internal process that we talked about. It became truly the focus of the nation. The federal government has really increased their participation and their support, which is why we received a $330,000 federal grant this past year. And it was used to increase our physical security, which is still ongoing, if you've seen any of the office changes lately, and as well as our cybersecurity increasing. And that will continue to be ongoing as every time that you create or increase your cybersecurity, the hackers get better at doing. One of the things that would be a potential hit, and I want to be sure you know about it, is Brevard along with 31 other counties are currently under a federal lawsuit, bilingual lawsuit. The lawsuit was served September 5th of last year. It is an ongoing lawsuit. The first order from Judge Walker, who again, is a federal judge in Tallahassee, was we were court-ordered to produce bilingual sample ballots in the general election. Not only what is mailed to voters, but everything published in the newspaper. You would have seen that we were bilingual for that. It was court-ordered by the judge and I anticipate that as this goes forward, we will become completely bilingual is what they're asking for, which will also be the cost of ballots. It will increase the number of ballots, depending, especially in the big elections. So if you have a two-page ballot, you may have a three- or a four-page ballot, which will also increase mailing costs. And that is part of the Voting Rights Act, again, federal legislation and federal lawsuit. Before I wrap up, I just want to, again, as I have heard my fellow constitutional say, take that point of privilege to give a shout-out to my staff who just work so hard year-round, even though people think it's one day a year. But I'm telling you what, 2018 was a one day that lasted a really long time. We got through a, having seven, conducting seven recounts. This state has never had a statewide recount. The Bush versus Gore was not statewide and instead, we had seven recounts, four machine and three hand recounts. I'd like to thank Commissioner Pritchett for her dedication on our canvassing board of being there with us through the recount fun. I know that many of my colleagues have mentioned the space issue. For any of you that were going through the lobby during the recount, you would have seen the public out there because I don't have a place to put them inside the canvassing room. And this is the first time I've been in this room since we wrapped up the election because I know with all the beautiful signage that you have added to our grounds, which I really, really appreciate, I think we should add to this that under the Florida room, we can add ballot storage and phone bank room because, as you know, that's what, this is one of two rooms that I used in 2018 and it'll be one of three that I will need to conduct the presidential election. I do not have admin space to conduct our phone banks, which are increasingly growing with voter issues and it will especially grow if we are court-ordered to be completely bilingual. And I'm really proud that we are doing more with less staff, but with the bilingual lawsuit, that would increase staffing potentially because I will have to hire bilingual staff members. And the court also in previous lawsuits in other counties has mandated how many bilingual poll workers you are required to do by how many voters are at each polling location. So I just want to keep, mention that to you. The tax collector mentioned about the Palm Bay expansion of the Palm Bay office. I'm thrilled about that. Palm Bay, largest city in our county. It is, my Palm Bay office is one of my two offices where I conduct early voting. And we all share that lobby currently right now. Lisa pulls in a lot of traffic into her office. Homestead time, obviously. Dana does, too. The clerk does also. We are in really tight quarters. I want to thank you for expanding the parking lot there. That was a huge, huge help for us and for our voters that use that as an early voting site. So thank you very much. And I'm here for any questions. No?
Thank you.
You're just tired, I know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for all you do, Lori.
Thank you.
We have three remaining shorter staff presentations that we think we can get through fairly quickly, so you can then move on to board discussion and public comment.
Just tell a joke in the middle or something to keep everybody engaged.
Yeah. I wish I was good at jokes. So I am not going to present all of natural resources budget. I'm just going to zoom into the stormwater utility, two slides on the entire utility, and then zoom in from there specifically to flood abatement. So these are revenues of the stormwater utility. We collect about $6 million a year from the stormwater assessment. We actively go after grants to leverage those dollars. And then you see the largest portion of our annual budget is from balance forward, which I will talk about more later. So on the expense side, you'll see that the majority of our budget goes to capital improvement projects. The other large pieces of the pie are our operating reserves and our operating expenses. And so as we construct more and more flood projects, we have more and more flood projects that we have to operate and maintain. And also in that operating reserves, we are saving up dollars in each of your five districts to be able to afford capital projects, capital improvement projects in the future. So just to give you a snapshot of sort of the last 10 years, Tropical Storm Fay in 2008 gave us a really good idea of where the biggest challenges were for us in terms of flood abatement in Brevard County. And so you see there that, you know, in the last 10 years, we've constructed over $33 million of flood relief projects, reducing the flooding impacts to over 12,000 homes and businesses. And you see columns there for how much of that was paid for with local dollars versus leveraged grants. And so we have been very aggressive in going for grants and we prioritize projects where we could get, where we could serve the most people and leverage the most grants. And so the 10-year history has been very successful. What that means is going forward, this is our five-year plan going forward for flood abatement. You'll see a smaller budget there, $11 million. There are only two rows there that show FEMA grants. Those grants we have applied for, we've made it through the first and second rounds of review, but those, you know, may or may not come through. For flood relief projects, there are very few grant programs. The ones that are out there are primarily federal grant programs and they are highly competitive across the entire nation. You have to demonstrate cost-to-benefit, return on investment, typically three to one, $3 of benefit to the cost of the project. And so we have implemented those projects that met those criteria. We are running out of projects that can meet those criteria in the future. And so, you know, this is our outlook for the next 10, five years. Then beyond that, we know that we have many, many more areas that flood. And so we've identified 42 areas that we know we have either interior flooding in people's homes or businesses or significant road flooding that impedes people's ability to get to work or get back home. And we estimate that it's going to cost on the order of $76 million to address those. And the outlook for grants under today's grant climate is not favorable. Also, as you, as we complete these larger projects and get down to the smaller projects with fewer number of people benefiting, it becomes next to impossible to meet those cost-benefit analyses that are required for the grants. And we lose the economies of scale that we get with larger projects. So this is what I said I'm going to share. So you'll see at the top left, our annual revenue of about $6 million coming in. The combination of salaries and operation and maintenance of those existing capital improvements constructed to date, use most of those dollars, leaving about $1.8 million available to go towards additional capital improvements. But those dollars are actually collected within each of your commission districts and can only be spent within your commission districts. So when you, and the other thing is that by local ordinance, only 28% of those available funds go to flooding. The rest of those dollars go to water quality improvements. So when you take 28% of that $1.8 million and you look at how it's broken up or how it's collected in the five districts, you see that some districts have a very small share of dollars coming in annually. And so when you're talking about multimillion-dollar costs to construct flood improvements, it takes years of saving dollars up to be able to construct those projects, which explains why we have such a large balance forward. This is my last slide. Just wanted to highlight, because I know it's been a concern to the board, about stormwater modeling. We have multiple project areas where we know we have flooding. We're working on stormwater modeling, especially North Merritt Island, the Windover Farms area, down at Hoover. And in West Cocoa, we've done extensive modeling and we've identified 17 projects there. We've completed five out of 17 projects. And so as we complete each one of those, we have to sort of tweak that model again. And so a lot of the explanations, you see, even though we've done some of the modeling as we actually finalize the designs of projects and as different development happens, we have to go in and continue to tweak those models. So this is just, you know, more detail than is easily pulled out of the budget and I wanted you to have an appreciation for the modeling that's going on both in-house and through outsourced consultants. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
You could just add about where we are with the North Merritt Island study and that the funds have been identified to move that forward.
Right. So that $450,000 modeling effort, $150,000 of that roughly is surveying that is being done by Public Works. And then $300,000 is, will be the modeling effort. $150,000 of that is funded this year. $150,000 of that will be funded in next year's budget. And the survey is underway and we'll be doing an RFP for the selection of a consultant for that work in the next couple of months.
All right.
Thank you so much.
If the board's good with that, and that was important because we've had significant board dialogue in the past about these type of issues. So we wanted really to put the whole picture together where drainage issues, flood modeling issues, and Public Works, you know, you can see where all the connections are and trying to put together a very comprehensive, longer-term, you know, approach to addressing these issues. So with that, we're going to move on to one of the last two staff presentations, and this one is from Space Coast Area Transit.
And I just wanted to let the public know, I have cards here and some of them are related to our presentations, but because they're presentations, we're going to save the cards for public comment. I didn't want anybody to think I forgot about you because you're in the pile. Thank you so much. Can you introduce yourself for anybody that doesn't know who you are?
Yes, I'm Scott Nelson, the Transit Services Director. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you today and I've heard a lot of different material and needs and I'd like, I thank you for the opportunity to talk about Transit This first one talks about our funding, our revenue at Transit Services Department. The point of this one is to show that between federal and state grants, 82% of our revenue comes in from outside sources from grants, 9.1% from the general fund. The largest chunk of our budget goes towards personnel compensation and benefits. There's a large piece of the pie in there for capital projects. That varies from year to year depending on if we're buying buses or renovating buildings or projects like that. Vehicle maintenance and fuel is also a significant cost for us. I want to, I want to sit down and elaborate on this slide a little bit. I chose the title "Demand, Response, Request and Needs." That's not Scott here demanding a response from you today. That is the technical term that the federal government, the FTA, uses when we report the number of trips that we provide. Demand response is for when somebody calls in to our call center, makes a reservation for a trip, and then we dispatch a bus, make a manifest, and then send out a bus later. So it's in response to a request. That's distinguished from fixed route service, which, you know, has a bus that's on a regular route through the day. That covers for us paratransit, contract service, volunteers in motion, and our agency van pool. So that's why I chose the broader term, but I don't want you to be confused. For us, we have just a little bit of an overview of what we do. We have 20 fixed routes operated by 29 buses. But we have 31 demand-response routes with 31 buses devoted to that. Most of the small buses you see running around the county are the demand response, the paratransit buses and routes that we do. There's a real need for that. We have response, we have requests for additional service for fixed route from all over the county. We were getting a lot from the south area. We were able to address a lot of those needs with starting Route 20, Heritage West Melbourne Route in September. We appreciate the help with that. Now, the majority of our fixed route requests are coming from the north area, from Titusville especially, Port St. John, Mims, and up in that area. But what I want to talk to you about today is the needs for demand-response paratransit service. We've prioritized that in the present time ahead of that, ahead of the fixed route requests that we get. We're seeing five to 15 new applications for paratransit service every week, so it's a continual thing. We have 2,600 registered applicants in our system right now that we provide our regular rides for. And I want to take a moment and put a face to this. Maria is a person that addressed you in September that was here, visually impaired passenger of ours. What she does on a daily basis, she lives down in the Post Road area in North Melbourne. She works at Rockledge Medical Center, Wusthof. She takes the bus to that job. She's up in age, if you, you may remember her. She takes the bus from that first job to a second job down at McDonald's on, in Suntree, on Jordan Blas and Wickham Road. And then she takes our bus home. So she's using the bus, visually impaired person that's trying to be a productive citizen and working hard at it. And so we appreciate her ridership and we want to, we want to respond to her needs and help her out. Person here in the audience today, Julia, takes, has a job at the clerk's office, visually impaired person. She takes a Brevard Achievement Center van to work in the morning. She takes our Route 29 bus home to her home in the area of Babcock Street in Melbourne. So, and then she walks home from there. So the people that we're talking about, that we're serving are not doing frivolous trips. They're really, a number of them are work trips. One of our clients is a yoga teacher, visually impaired person. You know, they're trying to be productive and we want to help them out with our service.
And some of the concern before, that we talked about before, was some people having to ride on those paratransport buses for longer than even the average person should, let alone somebody who either has a disability or they have an illness. That was a concern that I had.
Exactly. That's why we're coming to you with a That's why we're coming to you with a request for additional paratransit, additional demand response service. I want to just say a thing or two more. We service 13 kidney dialysis centers in Brevard County. Fresenius and DeVita, they have as many as 25 chairs at their centers. They run four shifts of chairs. We operate dialysis service, paratransit service from 4:15 in the morning to 8:00 at night, trying to accommodate that, coming and going to the same centers. Last week, we added six more dialysis clients to our registry. There's a lot of need and demand in that service. Last thing I just want to share, if you'll allow me. I apologize to you. I had a request from a woman in Oviedo. She was making a request. Her son is moving to Promise in Brevard, 30-some-year-old son. And he -- she wants to register him for door-to-door service. And so we're seeing five additional requests for that type of service every week as well on the average. So there is a need out there and I'll move on here in the slides. Thank you for bearing with me. These are some improvements that we've tried to do in that particular area, demand response, in the last couple of years. We got additional funding in fiscal year '16, '17 to address this, and now we've maxed out what we added at that time. The cost is about $150,000 a year for one paratransit route. We're looking at two. That's our ask. In September, at the two budget hearings, you all remember that were here, that there were a number of visually impaired advocates of our service that came and spoke. The commissioners at that time referred it to the TPO for Mobility Fee Study. In December, the board voted to add an increase in funding for public transportation to the legislative priorities. In check-in with Georgiana Gillette, the Mobility Fee Study is now indefinite. The money that was allocated for that has been sent to the Panhandle to address needs from the hurricane up there. So that's why we're -- we've always tried to access as many grants as we can, but we're coming to you for -- with an ask for a general fund increase to help us with that need. Any questions?
Now, I'll just say that, you know, I don't want you to take the brunt of your big ask because I asked you to ask, you know, and I don't -- I'll just put it out there because I don't want you guys to think that he's being bold by asking because other departments may not ask. I asked him to specifically ask his commission about these two paratransport routes. We talked about how much it would be, what we could do, and I even spoke with the county manager about it. Obviously, that'll be a discussion that we have, but I asked him to bring it along with his presentation for us to consider. So I just don't want you to be -- I don't want you to take that responsibility on --
I appreciate you bringing that up because some of this --
Well, no, because nobody else asked for anything. And he's like, "And I'm asking." And I, "Well, I mean, I asked you to ask and I said I would be happy to carry the water whether or not this commission chooses to support it." I think it's -- well, we'll argue the point later, but I think it's a basic need. I mean, transportation is our function. If we're going to provide public transportation, if we can't take care of our vulnerable, then shame on us. So anyway, move on.
Madam Chair, if we added on two routes, would that be $300,000 a year then?
Yes, it would.
And they generate a little bit of revenue too because there is some fees that come in. I know it doesn't cover the whole thing, so that might be a little bit of a differential there too as we're looking at a budget for it.
Could offset it a little bit. Paratransit routes don't carry as many rides. The rides are much more expensive.
Sure, and the people in wheelchairs going to dialysis and they have limbs. Well, okay.
And there's also potential grant opportunities that, you know, we would try to leverage with whatever, if the board finds that there's funding, we grant, it gives more additional opportunities. So that's really what I think we'd be looking at.
I think Jim and -- both Jim and Scott have proven they can squeeze blood from a turnip when it comes to that. So I appreciate everything that you guys do and to make it work. Thanks, Scott.
And we're not too far behind considering, you know, we had some significant dialogue with some of the charter offices. So the closing part today, and I just before I turn it over and let Jerry finish off because he's going to be dealing with human resources, I do want to just mention one part, which is, you know, the board in its -- about a year ago, was very focused and concerned about a priority that we said was an important priority for us too, which was employee compensation, recruitment, retention. And you've heard that from almost every charter officer today. So we all feel the same brunt. And the board provided us the opportunity to go out and get a pain classification study. It's been a long time in coming because it's not a traditional pain classification study. It's one that is more surgical and trying to do within available resources that this commission has, this board has, and try to do the best that it can to address issues. So I can tell you that Mr. Visco and I just discussed it this morning. We do anticipate that coming back to the board within the next two to four weeks. We're finally going to have a copy to review with directors next week and then we'll be bringing it back to the board. It is, you know, it's not going to be a panacea for addressing everything, but it's going to be a step in the right direction. So we, you know, the board's interest and staff's interest in making that an important priority as we move forward, try to do something within what we already have allocated, this board already allocated and set aside in the budget. So with that, you know, the closing part of it is really what's happening in risk management. And we want to talk about something that's a big part of the budget as well and has been for a long time, near and dear to all our hearts and mine, especially because I've been involved in that part of the program for the last 30 years, when, you know, we were less than $10 million on health insurance and now we're, you know, you're going to hear some rather big numbers. And so Mr. Visco is going to take that on and finish off employee benefits and what's happening in HR and property casualty insurance.
Great, thank you, Frank. Baton cleanup, here we go. HR's got $135 million budget and I want to give you a quick snapshot of where those big buckets are. The charges for services that you see on the screen are primarily the premiums that we collect, both in risk management and in group health. The balance forward numbers, that's where most of my reserves reside for both the property casualty and the group health side. What's interesting and what I'll point out is the general fund transfers, they only make up less than one-half of 1% of our overall budget. The miscellaneous transfers, that's the interest we earn on those reserves. What I want to do with the time that we've got is focus on the largest part of that budget rather than the entire program. And that's where Frank was alluding to, is we're going to talk to you about group health. So group health insurance funding looks like this. For the past couple of years, what I'm showing you here is, these are actual expenses for us. This is our cash basis accounting for group health in 2000, calendar year 2017 and 2018 and what we're projecting for the current 2019 year. What's interesting to note here is there was a decrease in our revenue in 2018 primarily because what you see on the bottom of the screen. We've done two years of premium reduction on the employer side, 4% in '17 and 8% in 2018. That revenue number for 2018 should be even lower than it is, but for the fact that we were very lucky in that we had significant recoveries from pharmacy rebates and performance guarantees as a result of audits our consultants did with Cigna going back to 2015 timeframe that generated for us in combination a little over $4 million in additional recovery. So we're very pleased with that. Take that into consideration for our projections for 2019. That projection doesn't include about $2.2 million in performance guarantee recovery. So this is just looking at the dollars we have in place today, what we anticipate going forward. While we're showing the revenues over expenses, you see some pretty significant reserve numbers. That's always been a topic of conversation for our group. Those reserve numbers have continued to grow. We're going to show you that. That's a little bit facetious, that we're not as comfortable as we would, those numbers would lead us to believe. We'll show you in a second what happens to those numbers. When you go from 2016 to date without raising employee premiums at all, and in the last, in the same period of time where you've reduced employer contributions by 12%, that has a significant impact on our ability to keep the plans funded. Oh, and P.S., while this was all going on, we also went out to market and were able to produce dental, vision, life, long and short-term disability policies with lower premiums in 2017 than we've had in previous years. So we're very pleased and proud of the product we've been able to put out, especially in the context of a total compensation package for employees when there are so many areas we can't do a lot in, we've been able to do a lot here. Where are we headed? What can we expect from our utilization trends as things move forward? Top line, the green line on this chart is my revenue, the premiums that we collect. The black and red lines are our expenses. The black line represents our expenses, which include things like our health reimbursement accounts. Obviously, when the green line crosses the black line, that's bad. We're, right now, we're, you know, we're collecting, we're doing pretty well in adding to our reserves. We expect that green line to flatten again this year while we'll see the black and red lines continue to grow at what is presently a 4% trend over the last 12 months. If we look back a little further, we've been running about an 8% trend over the last two years, which is pretty good. We're actually working a little bit below what our actuaries have projected our trends to be. Speaking of the actuary, these are the numbers that we get from our actuaries as we look forward. These are our incurred claims. This is what, when the actuary takes out of the mix things like the dollars we push through, the Medicare programs, our other administrative costs, this is the pure cost to the self-insured group health plan. So again, what's interesting here is you can see where our expenses continue to grow at a projected trend of about 7.5% based on our actuary. By the way, we're in the midst of updating our actuary report right now. It's due to Tallahassee by the end of March. We don't expect a lot of change there. Preliminary numbers is that our 7.5% projected trend is going to continue into 2020. So refer back to the prior slide where we're showing some very big numbers on reserves. Look what happens to reserve when you have a 7.5% trend and no change in your revenue projected through 2020, because that's where we stand right now. We're not planning to change, to increase premium on either the employer or the employee side through 2020. We're going to, at the moment, if trend holds, we're anticipating a $5.3 million expense over revenue in the current plan year, followed by a $9.1 million expenses over revenue in plan year 2020. Now, coupled with that, other obligations. GASB, Government Accounting Standards Bureau, has required for many years that we account for our other post-employment benefits, that is, the projected cost of retiree healthcare. When that requirement first began, it was GASB 45 rule. We had an over $140 million liability. That liability is brought down in the current year to $18.2 million under the current GASB 75 rules. So again, we've done a very good job of managing that forward-looking exposure primarily by having the majority of our Medicare eligible retirees move into fully insured plans and getting them out of the self-insured program. That's had a significant impact on our ability. You can see what happens to reserves when we hold these trends through 2020. That $37 million number that we start with drops quickly to $22 million, 13.2, after we take into account the required reserves the state insists that we maintain.
Go back one slide if you would. Let me add one thing. So, you know, what you see in that bottom line is the dollars that are in reserve that are beyond what the state mandates or requires for self-insured plan. Those numbers, however, are a little bit misleading in that, you know, we've had dollars there that took care of whatever the outstanding liability, even though you were not required to fund it, you're required to report it. But in our plan, we had those dollars available for post-retirement benefits that we are obligated, the board was obligated under the plan as it existed. So what you see there is a strategy, once again, looking over several years. You know, I think the best strategy would be if we reduced it by $2 million a year, that would be better than, you know, seeing it go from $29 to $13 million over a projected two-year period. However, this was all about trying to keep things at a zero, you know, increase in premiums. The reason that this would work is something that Jerry's going to talk about in a minute because there's the opportunity in 2020, we're going out on RFP, and I'll let him talk about that. But we're looking to do this because we want to try to keep things at zero, which gives us the ability to fund in other areas. And zero is better than what we did before because we, things were funded well by the board and in a variety of plan changes that were very significant, plan changes four or five years ago, both in terms of who participated in the plan and how it was funded, being a self-insured plan, Jerry mentioned, retirees, et cetera. We went to a high deductible plan. We did a variety of things that enabled us to go for something when things were, looked like they were tanking. I will tell you, I remember very clearly talking with Jerry five or six years ago saying, "You know what? If this trend continues, then neither of us are going to be here in two years." And, you know, fortunately, it's four years later and the numbers look really good. And that's not to our doing. It was basically, you know, what the board, you know, looked at and an insurance committee recommended to the board to make things sustainable. So I don't want you to be too concerned. We're trying to put those numbers out there. Are they worst-case scenarios? Probably, hopefully, and we're hoping maybe, you know, they won't be as bad in terms of, we don't want to lose that kind of money out of the reserve. However, it is the plan that we think is going forward and we think we have a strategy that will enable us in 2020, when we look at the plans, to reset and make sure the plan benefits and the associated, you know, premiums that come in will keep the plan stable. So why don't you finish off with that?
So that's pretty much where we end up. And in 2020, our major medical agreements will be expiring. So the timing is good for this strategy to play out. We will propose to go out on RFPs in 2020 to go to our primary markets and ask them for those next-generation innovative solutions. We're going to look at what can we do with our plan design options? What can the marketplace bring to us that'll help us get these costs back under control, reduce program costs where possible, and all in an effort to try to minimize whatever impact there have to be on employees. Because at the end of the day, after, for 2021, we're going to need to look at significant plan design changes and/or premium increases. We're going to try to do what we can on the plan design side first and minimize what we have to do on the premium side. But all this is being done so that we can maintain some semblance of a solid compensation package as we move forward. The RFPs give us that opportunity to go ahead and make the big changes, hopefully without major changes in the revenue side. The last thing I want to leave you with is just a reminder, you've heard this a couple times throughout the day in talking about funding. The board has previously authorized certain loans from insurance reserve. This is where we stand right now. This is also one of the reasons why it's important for us to maintain those reserves, that it's given us the flexibility to do these other things. So at the moment, this is what we have on the books, pending loans. Again, at the moment, we haven't had much in the way of requests to draw down on these loans, but these funds are available because we have the significant reserves that we do have, so we can do these other things. And we're pretty pleased to be able to provide that opportunity outside the health insurance world. So with that, questions? All right.
Madam Chair. Mr. Visco, the governor made a point to say that he wanted to open the state of Florida, consumers in the state of Florida to be purchased prescription drugs from Canada. His estimate was between 40 and 50% less. I think the Speaker of the House, Jose Aliva, has said he's on board. So there's no saying whether or not that will pass. My question is, of all of these premiums, the cost drivers here, are prescription drugs a large portion of that? If that was to come to fruition, would we see, given the circumstance right now, substantial savings? Or is that just something that would, you know?
No, prescription drug is a major component of our program. Last year, it was roughly about $11 million of our total program costs were in prescription medication. And that's with a program that has almost 90% generic drug fill compliance.
Wow.
So we're, yeah, we're knocking the top off of that one. Presently, federal law prohibits us from purchasing, as a plan prohibits us from purchasing from Canada. What you might be able to do as an individual, I can't do as a plan. If the state goes forward with this plan, the timing is very good. As we go to market with our pharmacy program as well as the major medical in 2020, we'll know at that point whether this is an option that we can roll into our plan. And I think it will be something we'd explore aggressively.
And I'm not familiar with drug prices, but are generics substantially cheaper in other countries? Are those just name-brand or the?
No, generics are substantial, for us, the generic is the most substantially inexpensive plan.
Very significant.
Is it, and I'm sure you're doing that, is it even cheaper though in other, are you aware, is that?
I cannot, I can answer that for you, sir. But it's, you know, when we're spending $3 for a drug, I don't know But when we're spending $3 for a drug, I don't know how much cheaper it gets.
Okay, I get it.
I was going to say, I have relatives in Canada, and I would say it's pretty comparable.
And it's important to know, too, Commissioner, that when we look at that, one of the slides that Jerry showed earlier was the increase in medical costs. And so there's two components, right? There's the actual medical claims, and then there's the pharmacy claims. Over the last three years, we've done remarkably well in terms of lowering costs, and we've actually had a very decline. It used to be $12 million of prescription drugs five or six years ago. So that just tells you how that trend has been very low. The medical costs for medical claims has been going up substantially. If we only looked at the medical side, the number is a lot worse than 7.5%. So there is significant opportunity, I think, on the pharmacy, if something like that goes through. Not as much as it used to be, because we've already reaped very significant benefits. As Jerry said, we're already very good on the generic drugs, and so our costs are already so low in a lot of those areas.
Can you explain the credits, too? I mean, just for anybody that's listening, the pharmacy credits, for people that don't understand.
Sure. Pharmacy benefit managers have contracts with the pharmaceutical manufacturers that include rebates for the number of prescriptions of certain brand-name drugs. Our PBM has negotiated those discounts on our behalf, and we are the beneficiaries of those rebates. When our members have certain brands prescribed to them, those rebates are then returned to our health plan. That's the one component, is the rebate piece. That was about $1.7 million in rebates last year.
That's great.
We expect to see something similar this year, again, as purchase patterns don't change that dramatically. We should see something very similar to that. The other part was performance guarantees. That's when Cigna was negotiating with our plan to come on board. They promised certain things to us. One of the things they promised was timeliness of processing and the degree of discount that they were going to be able to negotiate on our behalf. When we audited the discount component going back over several years, we found that Cigna had taken credit for certain discounts that were sort of ingrained in the program. They weren't the result of their negotiations. They were discounts that were available to us in general, outside the contract. So we backed that out of their performance guarantee calculation, and they wound up owing us a couple of dollars for that. That's been fixed. Going forward, they'll be taking credit for the discounts that they have negotiated.
Love a good audit.
It was a good audit.
And so at this point, I don't know how, if you want to just go to public comment or board discussion, but ultimately, we're looking in light of everything we've heard.
Do you want to talk about CPI or anything?
Yeah, whatever you, at this time, we're just, we're all ears to whatever direction the board would like to be providing.
Well, we can bring it for the board discussion as it's ordered, and then you, do you want to talk about your items, Commissioner Tavaia?
Whatever is at your pleasure, so before, after, I'm good with anything.
I mean, I would say might as well talk about them now, get that out of the way.
Sounds good. We've had some asks from members, we've had some asks from constitutional officers, we've had some asks from commissioners. I have a couple, and they're a little bit different, because while everyone's asking for more money or more services, my asks are to cap the amount of money that we extract from taxpayers. So these two resolutions couldn't be more simple, and I wish, unfortunately, they were unnecessary. One says that we won't raise taxes, the other says that we will not bust the charter cap. This is important, because Ms. Hayes has to create a budget, and certainly giving her direction as to how to create that budget as soon as possible, I think, is in the best interest of all of us, as well as staff. So that being said, the first one, and the most simple of the two, is requesting that we give our intent not to increase taxes according to Florida statute 200.065. I don't think I really need to read it. It just defines what a tax increase is, according to the state of Florida. It would allow us, of course, to generate more funds, but just not have to advertise an aggregate tax increase. So it's just a resolution declaring the intent of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners to adopt a budget which would not, again, constitute a tax increase under Florida statute 200.065. That's the resolution. Madam Chair, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions, should there be any.
I have a quick one. Is that just for this budget cycle? Is that just for, I mean, or is it forever?
I would love to do it forever, Madam Chair.
Why, just for clarity for the public?
Yes. This would be, declare, the last line says, declare its intent to adopt the fiscal year 2019, 2020. So I hope this would be indefinitely, but this is only for this upcoming year, Madam Chair.
So moved.
Okay, so you made the motion, Commissioner Loeb?
Unless you want to make it, and I'm happy to second it.
I'd be glad to second it.
Any which way.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Tavaia. Any more discussion on that, this first item?
That's rather presumptuous. I would love to say and be able to say that we don't need to raise taxes, but, boy, you're tying our hands going forward if we have an emergency situation from a hurricane to some critical need that arises.
I think, I'll tell you what, I think Commissioner Smith brings up a very valid point, one that I saw in one resolution, but not the other. So I would like to, with hoping to get Commissioner Smith's support, I would, and hopefully to keep Commissioner Loeb, I would like to add a clause that would give us the out, should there be a declared emergency by either the federal or the state government. So this would give us the ability to raise taxes if there was, you know, a hurricane or a major event. But should there not be a declared emergency by a federal or a state agency, then I would like to have an intent that we do not, in fact, raise taxes. So hopefully, that'll win your support on that one.
And perhaps you can, you know, just for my own amusement, because this item, it wasn't added on last minute, but it was sort of walked on to this sort of workshop. Do you want to explain the difference between your two resolutions? Because at least for myself, I think I would be supportive of one and perhaps not the other, but I would like a chance to discuss the difference, because there's clear differences in both of your items.
Okay, so you want me to discuss the other one before we vote on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because what I thought is you were going to present it today, and we were going to have some discussion, and maybe we're going to see it at the next commission meeting, but you're actually wanting to vote on the two resolutions today?
Just to be clear, this is an intent not to, so, you know, I'm just trying to help budget staff as we move forward. If there is not a clear voice amongst us that we are not interested in keeping taxes low, that we, in fact, do not mind raising taxes, then I think that sends a different message to Ms. Hayes and the budget-writing staff, that they're, they have the ability to go out and increase taxes to any level, the way that, you know, Commissioner Smith, I probably should have listened to at the last meeting about the SORL, sending, you know, giving them a little bit of direction, which I hope we look at again at this upcoming meeting. But I would like to give the budget-writing staff at least some guidelines as to, when they create the budget.
Do you think there was a danger of it happening? I'm just curious, because I know we're all.
I'm with you, but, yes, yes. We have raised taxes, and I haven't voted for it, but this commission, according to the state of Florida, has, sorry, I take that back, Commissioner Loeb was not part of that, but this commission has raised taxes, yes, to be very clear.
Because I agree, I want to look at that, and I think we're having a good enough year that we shouldn't have that as even an issue. My only concern is with the sheriff's budget. I think that's going to be our challenge, and that might take a little bit more research, because I don't know what numbers he's come back with.
But I believe that may fall under the second item.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm.
That's why I wanted some clarity.
I don't have them in front of me.
Exactly. And it's easy, because that's why I wanted to be clear, too, because a lot was said, not just to the newspaper, but a lot of assumptions were made based on, one, because what we've always done, and traditionally in the workshops, is we've always given direction to say, do not exceed the cap. We all say it, we all agree, you know, and it's fun, and it's very political to get everybody on the record, and I'm happy to vote not to increase anything beyond the CPI. But I may not support your other resolution, given that, you know.
You're free to support or not support.
But I'm saying, if it gives you greater comfort, or you fear that we're, you know, going to.
I fear for the taxpayers of Brevard County, in all honesty, that we are going to extract more money than what we need to and give it to programs that, you know, quite frankly, probably don't deserve money when there are greater needs out there. So that's the intent of this. There's nothing more to prioritize what we hold most dear than a budget. So, yeah, yes, Frank, sorry, Mr. Abate, sorry.
What I'm hearing, and so let me put it in Frank's words as the county manager, actually, what you're doing is you are giving the county manager direction as to develop a budget that does not show a tax increase under statute, which means it would come in that the aggregate millage rate.
Right.
Right.
Not exceed 100% of the rollback rate.
Right, right.
And yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Abate, I just know all the hard work that Jill does on your behalf.
No, 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 she, and I'm not trying to, but what I'm saying is that this is limited to that, so that this does not actually affect the cap or whether something goes in cap. This is only about the aggregate. Last year, we did do an aggregate budget, and unless the board told me, very honestly, I think I said this last year, and this being the third budget we're working on, we would, we know what the board has said in the past about do not go above the aggregate. That allows us still to go to CPI and to reach whatever the charter cap.
And you didn't even bring anything to us that was beyond the aggregate.
No, no, we didn't. No, we didn't. And our attention would be not, and I think that's really what this resolution would be saying, is the, our expectation or the direction you're getting is, that's where we, that's where we want to see this again this year.
Right.
Right? Isn't that, isn't that basically what we're saying on this particular resolution?
Where the aggregate rate doesn't.
Right, go above 100%.
Exceed 100% of the rollback rate. That's defined in statute.
Right, yes.
But if the entire board gave you direction not to present a budget, you wouldn't present a budget outside of that, correct?
Oh, no, and that's what I'm taking this resolution to be, to say, you're getting the direction now that whatever else is decided, stay within that aggregate.
Right.
And obviously, if there's a problem with that, I'd have to bring it back to you.
Commissioner Tavaia, this is what we typically do, right? So it's, there's nothing that I'm not perceiving here, correct?
No, we've raised, don't, no, you, we have voted, this board, not me in particular, but this board has voted for a tax increase as defined by.
That's when the millages were lower, and it actually was less money, I know we went back and forth on that, people paid less taxes.
And people paid more taxes as well.
Well, with that aggregate that year.
Yeah, this is why, this is why the state of Florida set this, so you and I don't have to argue this back and forth. This is set, it's Florida law.
Different ways of doing the accounting books of how you look at them, so I get that. So I understand what you're trying to say, sir. So I was just trying to get if there was something here I was missing.
So this is very important, and here's why it's very important, because if there's not the support of three commissioners for this, I think that staff, Mr. Abate, gets direction no matter how this goes. So this is, I'm not trying to, I would like you to support this, but if you don't, this certainly gives more direction to Mr. Abate and staff as they create the budget.
Well, I think I'm pretty much in agreement with not trying to exceed those limits, for sure. So I, I mean, I'm good with that, I just, I'm a little, I'm curious about a resolution on it, with it being direction. That's the only thought, I was trying to figure this out, just because there's always so many things that.
Because I think, I think it's, I think that that's probably more appropriate for a commission meeting, myself. And I mean, I'm happy to support it, but I'd rather do it during a commission meeting, because since this is not typical protocol, what we're doing here, you know what I mean? I found out about it, I think, in the newspaper before I got the email, or maybe exactly at the same time.
Yeah, I read the paper, too, and it kind of threw me off a bit.
Which was pretty, which was pretty terrible, but, I mean, I won't talk about that, because.
You're more than welcome, this is, this is a budget workshop, I believe, is what this was.
And we usually vote on the millage and anything related to the millage during.
And this is a, this is intent, this is a budget resolution. I don't know how this could be better forum to discuss. It's publicly noticed. This is absolutely, and we can ask Ms. Bentley if this would be an appropriately occurring to Florida law or Florida statute. Could we, could we vote on this intent here?
I wouldn't say that it'd be illegal, but I think it would be the will of the board.
And I think, given the late submission for this item, I'd see it as more appropriate during a commission meeting, so it can be discussed in an open public forum as opposed to a workshop. It's just, I mean, and again, I'm happy to support it, but.
I don't have a copy.
Just to put a couple thoughts out there for the board's benefit, especially Commissioner Smith. I've said from the get-go, before I was even on this commission, that I'm, as a general rule, thank you, opposed to increasing taxes. However, I had folks asking me even during the campaign, will you pledge not to raise taxes? And I told them, no, and they looked at me, some of them kind of shocked, well, why won't you pledge not to raise taxes? I said, because I don't know what's unknowable. There are things that are unforeseeable, and I'm not going to tell you if we have a tornado that spawned from a hurricane that's hovering over Brevard County, and we have mass destruction, and the state, the federal government don't come in timely to help us out, that I'm going to say, well, I promised I wouldn't raise taxes, so to heck with it, let's just see what happens. But as a general rule, I'm opposed to raising it. So I, you know, I was.
Everybody here is opposed to raising it.
Right.
And I think that we need to have some more time to think about it, because I only found out about it today, and I don't have a problem supporting it either.
Yeah, I believe that the email was sent 48 hours ago, so I understand, we may have sent out.
Which is a whole ton of notice, you know what I mean?
48 hours to read half a page?
No, but 48 hours notice for the public as well. I mean, I think it's responsible, at least, again, it's my position.
I get it, I.
Because we've had those discussions several times about giving.
I'm with you. I gave the public heads-up two and a half years ago, when I decided to run, that my intent and my, I would not raise their taxes. So I've given the public, you know, heads-up.
And last year, last year, this board voted, you included, because it mattered to raise Melbourne Tillman's rate by 10%. So if we're, you know, splitting hairs here, we raised Melbourne Tillman's millage rate 10%, so that's a pretty big tax increase.
That, first of all, that's a fee, so there's a huge difference between a tax and a fee. A fee is for service, a tax is a base rate.
Not by some people's definition, but, okay.
We did the CPI when we were trying to do the airport, and that's a fee, too.
I'm going to make this kind of easy, I think.
I guess it's a fee.
It's just so much stuff.
But I'd rather the public have more notice on this, myself.
I'd like to meet.
I'm happy to support it, I just want there to be more public notice.
I would like for them to do that, I could hear it now with intent, but to vote on the resolution, I'd like to wait till at least Tuesday.
With respect to this particular item, I mean, I'll just put it out there, my intention's to support it, whether it's today or at the next meeting, but I'll move the table to the next meeting, just to make this go in the forward direction.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, you'll have to withdraw your.
I'll withdraw my motion for the time being.
You'll have to, it's the only way, I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Otherwise, it fails, and you can't bring it back. Somebody else would have to bring it back.
I'll go ahead and withdraw it.
That's actually an incorrect assessment of Robert's Rules of Order. I would not be allowed to bring it back at this meeting, but I could bring it back at any subsequent meeting as an elected body of, as an elected member of this board. It's clear in Robert's rules.
Either way, in an abundance of caution, I'll go ahead and withdraw it at this time, and if he wants to reintroduce it, great, or if he wants me to reintroduce it at that point in time, I'm happy to do it, it doesn't matter, I'm in support of it.
I was not aware that there would be this much controversy about raising taxes amongst five Republicans, so I will make the motion to pass this resolution, whether it has a second or not.
You know what, I'll second it. Makes you feel happy.
To pass it right now?
Yes.
And I'll just go on the record to say that I will support this when it comes back to our meeting, you know, but I'm not going to be bullied into voting for something just because somebody's playing politics.
Yeah, me either, because I thought the discussion on this would be good after the newspaper thing.
And I think, I think the public.
I was trying to get the slant on that a bit.
The public deserves a chance to speak on it, it's been 48 hours, and although we understand how all this stuff works, and we understand, and I've always supported never increasing above an advertised rate, I will not, you know, be strong-armed into voting for something because someone's so impatient not to, not to bring this to a regular public board meeting on Tuesday, so.
There's a motion and a second on the chair.
Well, I wanted to see if anybody else wanted to speak, so, does anybody else want to speak? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
On that, Madam Chair, I'd like to give the county manager our intent to do his best not to go above the parameters that we would like for him to do as he's going forward in the budget, and we can discuss that at Tuesday's meeting, since he's looking for direction.
I'm, can, I understand it failed, I get it, can, just for the county manager, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pritchett, I didn't understand the difference between what you just suggested to the county manager.
I don't want to vote through a resolution, but I want to give him direction, that's really what our hearts at, but I don't want to put in the form of a resolution tonight. This could have been discussed Tuesday, maybe it could have been there. I, it makes sense to me.
Well, I don't see any reason for the county manager to go above the CPI anyway.
I don't either, so it's, it's just what we're thinking anyway.
And this is like the first time we've done it, because-
To be honest, I just, to me, it just sounds like political games.
I don't want the games, I don't want the gotcha, that's where we're at.
Coming up in two years, and you just want to try and play gotcha.
So, but-
So-
I just don't want to see taxes increased, and this board has increased taxes.
I don't think anybody else does either, so.
Then why has this board constantly voted for tax increases?
The board has not increased taxes. The two ones that were done were voter referendums that had to be done for parks and hills, it was two different things. This board has not raised the taxes.
Yes, we had to advertise two years ago, according to Florida statute.
Because of parks and because of hills, and they were voter-voted in amounts that were still under the announced voter vote at four.
Okay, sorry, can we, can we ask Ms. Hayes whether or not we had to raise it because of the Advalorem millage was an increase two years ago?
And while she's looking at that, just respectfully with the next couple comments, for the sake of the folks that are waiting to have public comment, if we can try to wrap it up, I apologize for pushing people, but once she gets a chance to respond to that-
Hey, it was brought here, so we have to, it's board's discussion time, so it's unfortunate, but-
I would certainly agree with that.
In fiscal year 1718, the adopted aggregate millage rate was higher than the aggregate rollback rate, so that was advertised as a tax increase according to Florida statutes in fiscal year 1718.
Ms. Hayes, were the amounts that were brought forward less than the county taxpayers had paid the year before, did the actual dollar amount that we collected from the citizens go down?
The, the millage rates in most instances went down. The total revenue collected went up. Of course, you have new construction revenue that plays into that as well.
Can you explain the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District? Just briefly?
I don't have a lot of information on that in front of me.
It's a special district, correct?
It's a special district, and-
And it's a single millage, and what we're talking about here is talking about the aggregate of all the millages, so one millage rate itself-
But we have to vote to increase that millage rate, correct?
Above the-
And we increased it last year by 10%, and we voted to increase it by 10% last year?
I just want to clarify that the Melbourne Tillman is not a part of Brevard County's Advalorem taxing.
Correct.
That is a user fee, and they are a special district, so I just want to clarify that. That doesn't, it's not part of our-
But we increased that rate by 10% last year.
Yes, we did increase the rates by 10%.
We voted to increase that rate by 10% last year, correct? Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Can we, can we go to the second one, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. I thought the first one was easy, this one's a little bit more difficult, believe it or not. I think this is, I don't see any way, this is, let me read the title here. "A Resolution Declaring the Intent of Brevard County Board of County Commissioners to Not Make a Finding of Critical Need pursuant to Section 2.9.3.1, Section C of the Brevard County Charter, if fiscal year revenue 2020 is projected to exceed fiscal year 2019 revenue absent of such a finding." This one, I was bright enough to put in the suggestion of Commissioner Smith that we add in a state or a federal declaration of emergency. But just a little history here, 73% of voters said they did not want to see the millage rates rise faster than CPI or 3%. So, all this would do would direct the county manager and his staff to produce a budget that would go along with 73% of voters, Republicans, Democrats, and independents, and not raise the millage rate higher than CPI or 3%. So, that is what this resolution would do, Madam Chair.
Or isn't that exactly what he's charged with, anyway?
No, that is not correct.
You think he's going to, you actually think that he's going to create a budget that's higher than the CPI?
I, were you listening to some of the constitutional officers and their suggestions that we just got? There were at least one, probably two, that asked for something higher than what the CPI was. So, do I think that that's a possibility? Absolutely, and if I didn't think it was a possibility, I wouldn't be bringing this resolution.
Well, if he does, and we reject it, then why is this little dance necessary?
It's very important, because a lot of time is going to go into the crafting of a budget, and I do not want to, I would rather see the work come back in a way that meets the bulk of our approval, one way or another. Listen, if I, if I lose this, that is a-okay, direction will be given to staff. This is, your no vote is just as important as your yes vote on this. Staff will, staff is getting stuff out of this, I mean, Mr. Abate is getting stuff out of this either way.
Yeah, on this particular one, while I misspoke on, and I thank Jill for correcting me on that, on the Melbourne Tillman, there are 20 millages out of the 25 that are under the board's jurisdictions that, you know, are operating millages that we need to look at, that go into that aggregate number, something close to 20. And it is possible that you could have a situation that one of them would be above the charter cap, and because the charter cap says if you have a supermajority vote, you could put under that particular millage whatever that either emergency or critical need is, that there's, you have a finding for, and that has occurred in the past, that one millage rate could go above that CPI. And you saw some areas even in Public Works and stuff, and I'm not saying Public Works in any way, shape, or form, but there could be one of those millages where there's a need to go above CPI, and you, we could get a majority vote that would give us more revenue in that particular millage than the CPI would, yet it would not be advertised as a tax increase, because under Florida statute, you look at all 20, and if the aggregate millage for all 20 is 100% or, or less than 100%, 100% or less, that it would not show as a tax increase, which is what that first part of the discussion you were having was, so.
But, no, I just, I just wanted it on the record, because Melbourne Tillman went through about nine years with no increase, so what we did is there's only two of us that are allowed to vote on Melbourne Tillman, or two of us that actually have a vote, because one of us can veto the other, and that's myself and Commissioner Tabia. And what we did last year, since they haven't had an increase, is that we increased their fee, but yes, a fee, I would still call it a tax, for their special district by 10%, which was a pretty small insignificant number, but we still increased their special district by 10%, and we voted to do so. So, to me, I guess, you know, six, one half dozen of the other.
What was the amount of that, $1.90?
It was something like that, but I'm saying, we voted beyond a 3%, so not everything is always black and white, and not everything is politics, and I'm not going to play politics with whatever it is we're doing that's different from the last two years, because we could have had these resolutions on the last two, the last two years if we felt we needed them, or we could bring this to a commission meeting like we normally would instead of the 48-hour notice. That's the part I don't like about it, myself. I mean, that's the part that I disagree with, I think the public deserves to have notice.
And I'll just tell you, I'm not as enthusiastic about this resolution as I was the prior, so unfortunately, I'm not able to second this one.
It's, that's fair. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the charter cap resolution.
I just have a motion by Commissioner Tabia, I think everybody heard it, I didn't hear a second, so.
Nice one.
All right, so motion fails for lack of a second.
So, again, Madam Chair, that's very important, because that, a failure is very important, because that gives staff the ability then, and the direction that this board has no problem moving forward with busting the voter-approved charter cap with 73%, so.
And nobody on that board said that.
You're not, you're not busting-
Nobody on that board said that. Are you going to present a budget that's going to bust the cap?
You're not busting the charter cap, I mean, you are, you are abiding by what's provided for in the charter. If the board did a four-to-one vote, yeah, but I understand what you're saying, you're going above the CPI or 3%, whichever's less, in a millage if the board meets the criteria of that section that you say, yeah, so you're right.
Yeah, to be very clear, what happened, this failure was substantive in nature. The folks that Mr. Abate now knows, should we declare a special need that-
A critical need.
A critical need, that, correct, with four votes, which there were four votes, people, we would have the ability then to declare that special need to increase it.
Which is what the people voted for, is that we can only bust the cap, they voted for the cap, but that the cap can only be busted for a critical need. So, if we, if it's a critical need or it's set emergency-
Like a dinosaur museum or a dance hall, Madam Chair?
Well, I don't think anybody busted the cap.
Same green money.
Nobody busted the cap for a dinosaur museum or anything like that.
That, we will use that with the same green money that, that we, you know, that was presented here, that was general funds. So, we will declare eventually, potentially, a critical need while we were spending money for a dinosaur museum and a dance hall.
That's completely untrue.
It is, uh-
It's politics, and I get the game you're playing, but I'm not participating.
I-
So, let's move along to real business and talk about anything in the budget that Commission, the board would like to talk about. Any adjustments, anything that you want added, anything you want removed, any substantive discussion besides this politic and grandstanding that we're doing? I'm looking at anybody, I'm looking down this way first, and I'm going to look down this way.
Because I've sat down with Frank and with Jill to go over my concerns, and I'm happy to highlight some of them again, but if everyone's already fully articulated their concerns to him, if, I guess my question is, do you feel that you've had enough input from the commissioners to craft a budget that ought to be pleasing to the vast majority of those of us sitting up here?
My intention is, what you heard today from me is the direction I'm headed, unless you tell me some of what you heard is not consistent with this board's expectations. So, we tried to formulate this workshop today and look at a path that we're trying to go down, and now we're looking for any specific saying, hey, this isn't the way we, you know, we want you to focus more attention or priority in a different area. I think we hit what we thought were the critical areas, and so maintaining levels of services in other areas we didn't speak about would be our, you know, our starting point, and then doing the things and trying to find the resources.
And do you plan on delivering a budget that is, that won't advertise for a tax increase?
Yes, yes, that's what my intent is.
That's what I wanted clarification.
And I have a question to-
Sure.
-Mr. Abate. Is this not the largest CPI that we've had to deal with in probably 10 years?
Yeah, I think that's about accurate.
Is it 10 years? Yeah, it's, yeah, 2.44%. I believe that's one of the highest in the last 10 years, if not the highest.
I rest my case.
Can I throw out a thought on this? We have a budget we have to put together, we don't put together the supervisor of elections, we don't put together property praiser, the sheriff, I mean, we really don't get to put that together. So, it's almost not fair that when they have to increase their budget, all of a sudden, well, you don't get to put in any roads this year, you know, you don't get to fix the infrastructure, because the sheriff needs more of a budget, and I believe he needs more of a budget. But on that, Mr. Tabia, Mr. Abate, you haven't put this budget together yet. My, my thought is, we're still working on it, and I, you know, we do budgets all the time, figure it out. So, it's almost a little bit of a premature discussion until we find out the information coming in. And I've learned in my life, if I do something just like that because it's emotional, I make a mess and I create a crisis. I'm hoping we come back with good numbers, I don't know, he hasn't brought them in yet, and honestly, I haven't studied the county finances in that depth that you have to do, Ms. Jill, to put one together. So, on that, I don't feel I'd be responsible doing this until you come back with stuff, except I hope you understand the five of us up here and what we're looking for, and that you're doing your best, sir, when you present a budget.
And you have pretty clear direction as far as where our limitations are about trying to, or delivering us a budget that doesn't advertise for a tax increase.
And this has got to be about the sheriff's thing, and if the sheriff comes along and to keep the community safe, he needs that, I'm not about to say, don't put in any more roads, the whole gear, we're going to have to give the sheriff the whole budget, because we can't do anything about his budget.
I think he was looking at the MSTU.
I know, I know that's, I know that's the whole poll on this, I mean, I got that when I read it, the political poll on this. But in all fairness, if the sheriff needs that for public safety, I can't penalize the general fund that way, so we've got to figure this out. But if you can come back with some ideas that are within the scope, because again, the CPI is higher than we've seen it, I'm just waiting for some numbers. I haven't seen them yet to make a responsible enough decision to go ahead and lay down a gauntlet, you may, you may never do that this year, I can't do that right now. I need to see what you bring in, and I'm hoping that it's enough to cover everything, but we'll see.
Yet, to be clear on this one, if you wanted to fully, and this is, I guess to Ms. Hayes, if you were interested in fully funding the sheriff's budget, would you be able to decrease the request on the MSTU increase to the requisite 2.44, and take that additional, what, I think about two and a half million that he expected to, that he hopes to get from that MSTU, and then increase his general fund by a similar amount, thus get, thus getting him the same total, total dollar figure without, A, busting the cap, well, that would not bust the cap, assuming it wasn't in any other line, that would just require more of our general funds to go to him. He would be able to use those funds for the same way that he would want to use them that would come out of the MSTU. Is that a, is that a fair, is that a fair assessment?
I want to make sure I understand the question, so I can answer it properly. Of course, we won't have property valuations until June, the preliminary valuations, and then certified in July, so it's very difficult at this point to estimate where the rollback rate is going to be, what the charter cap rates are going to be. So, if you're, are you asking if, whether or not it was funded through the law enforcement MSTU or the general fund, how that would impact the aggregate?
Well, if we, yeah, I see what you're saying. If we took his expected increase on the MSTU, but it's about two and a half million, I think, to his numbers, and we were to find that two and a half million dollars in the general fund, that would, assuming, well, it wouldn't break the cap, assuming that was the only line that was going to, the only line that was going to increase, then we would be concerned about a tax increase. But if we found two and a half million dollars of other savings, because we prioritized public safety amongst other things, would that then meet both those requirements, assuming our, assuming our aggregate?
I mean, I think, you know, we're talking about hypotheticals, that, I'm just trying to figure out how to get some direction on where you want our priorities to be. I understand where you're coming from, and I will tell you, I don't know until the sheriff submits his budget and how he wants to do what he needs to achieve, we don't know where that is. I told you, we were planning a work with him to try to do the most we can so we could continue to do with roads. What you just suggested would make achieving that more difficult, because obviously, the more money we pull out of general fund to fund the sheriff using those dollars for another priority, you, that's part of why you saw the budget presentation, you saw there's other pressures that, you know, when I take that away, how do I get that $1.2 million that I need to, you know what I'm saying? So, that's just part of that pool of money, you're right.
I understand, the same pool that we put into dinosaur museums and dance halls, is that the same pool, Mr. Abate?
Yeah.
Was that general fund money?
If it was general fund money, it would be those green dollars.
Thank you.
And one, one point if I may, commissioners, just to make sure we give you good, accurate information completely, in those last 10 years, we were able to pull up, there was one year where the CPI in 10 years was higher than 2.44, so nine out of the 10 years, this would have been the highest.
I'd like to see those two para-transit units added to our budget somehow. Is that something you can pull off?
Well, I'm looking for board direction, if you tell me that-
I'm asking before I ask for, before I ask the board if that's something they would consider.
I certainly would.
Two total, or-
I think that these people-
Two, two routes, it's 300,000.
Depending on transit are, they, as it was mentioned, they want to be productive citizens.
It's health and safety, it's transportation, and we provide public transportation, and half these people are going to work, the other half need the doctors, I don't know how many of them are doctors.
All I can say is, if that is the wish, if that's what the board, as a majority of the board tells us, hey, strive to do that, do I think we would accomplish that? My answer would be, I have enough confidence in the staff and everyone that we would, we would do that. If that's what the board.
It looks like we have at least.
As a priority, yeah, I mean.
It looks like we have four. I don't even need to ask John, because I'm sure he won't support it. But if there's four of us that support it, and we ask you to, you know, if we ask you to somehow make it work, obviously, I would encourage you to, to try to, you know, obviously, find grant funds and all that good stuff, but.
I have no intention of letting the board down in anything it directs me to try to do.
All right. Do we need, do we have to vote on that? Do we need to vote on that, or do we need just some direction?
I guess it depends on whether or not the county manager feels he has sufficient direction.
If you're providing direction, it would be helpful to me if there was some, a motion with a, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion?
Are you sure you don't, are you sure you don't want to wait to give public the time? Because I have, I've had ten minutes, and you were concerned about forty-eight hours, and now I've had ten minutes for this, unless you sent out an email, I did not say.
Well, this is budget, and it was part of our budget packet, so, I mean, it's okay that you don't support it, but.
You complained about forty-eight hours, now we got something.
But this is part of our budget, and it was part of our budget packet, so.
The two for 150,000 bucks?
Yes, yes. It's in the PowerPoint presentation.
And this is just intent also, it's not an actual resolution.
And just a point of clarity, because I think I'm very disappointed in the ideology of the four members of the board, not any of the staff up here. I have a great deal of, sorry if I wasn't clear, and I apologize, with Mr. Abate and Ms. Hayes, I think you will do an absolute wonderful job on this budget, whether it receives my thumbs up or thumbs down. I have been very impressed with the diligence, the hard work, the dedication, and the product, again, whether I vote for it or not. So please don't, please, that certainly was not my intent to question the hard work or, or the time that you do put in for this county commission, whether, again, whether it gets my vote or not.
So do you have any, anything you want to add for the budget input about the workshop, or?
On your, on your, before we vote on this, absolutely, I think it's improper to be voting for increases without justifying or without pointing out areas in which we can decrease. So while I, while I think that, you know, adding a couple routes for paratransit sounds like a great idea, until I was able to identify areas that I could cut, which I think I've given this board ample opportunity, millions of dollars that I've suggested over the years, and this board decided, again, not Mr. Loeb, yeah, I.
Oh, but he only supported one, so you make, make sure you kick his teeth in for the second one he didn't support, for your second resolution. So he gets a pat on the back for one, because he supported your first resolution, and then he gets a kick for not supporting the second, right? Wouldn't that be correct? And you thanked him for his support, but you didn't get a second on your second resolution.
It's, it's his ideology, he, he, you guys are independent, I'm not, I, it's your decision to vote for this. I'm not mad at anyone. You're clearly distraught because of your vote.
No, I just don't, I don't play the game. I'm not playing this political game, whatever this is.
Taxes are not a game, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Taxes are not a game.
And they're not fees either. I'll keep that in mind.
Completely, they're completely different. I implore you to meet with our budget staff, and they will explain the difference between ad valorem taxes.
Oh, I understand what an ad valorem tax is, but I.
I don't think we're getting anywhere with this.
And we're not, you're right, but it's just, it's just ridiculous. But anyway, I have a motion. Commissioner Loeb made the motion. Commissioner Pritchett, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four-one to add the two routes.
And I just want to add in as well, what differentiates what you did from what we just did, in my mind, as far as the notice is concerned, is that was at the request of staff, and I think that's something that's a little bit more extenuating. And I was certainly happy to support one of your motions. I didn't have the concern as far as timeliness. My concern with your second motion was unrelated to that, but in defense of the other three that are up here, at least to me, that's the distinguishing factor that it was requested.
Yeah, I'm confused. I thought, and maybe I misheard, I thought that was Commissioner Isnardi that asked that.
I asked if they wanted us to make a motion.
Right, and Mr. Abate indicated it would be helpful.
Oh, okay, so I thought, that was paratransit, I thought that you had asked the staff to bring that.
I asked staff to bring the cost forward for the two routes, that they were deficient. And then I asked staff, I asked Eden first, and then I asked County Manager Abate if he wanted us to make a motion, and he said it would be beneficial for him if we did, so it was clear.
I just wanted to put that out there so that there's not some perceived conflict in why we're doing one thing with one or another.
It's a specific budget item.
It's a-okay. I respect the majority of the board and their decision to go forward.
All right, any other budget discussions? I meant from the board. Okay, where's my agenda? Buried? Buried? I lost it. Got buried in my paperwork. You want us to wait?
No public comment.
We're just going to public comments. Do you guys want to take five minutes, or let Ms. Commissioner Pritchett just take a quick break?
Can we take five minutes and wait?
Five minutes, it's fine. It's a quick break, I'm sorry, everybody that's waiting.